All right, let the record reflect. We have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just to correct the record, as I said, all members present, Councilwoman Deb Cohen is excused today. Minutes for approval, motion for executive minutes of June 10, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Already been discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of June 10, 2019, with the amendments that were shared.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all. It's not raining, so that's good, at least not for the moment. Rain comes back after a beautiful weekend, but at least we get some respite. Couple of announcements and a couple of presentations. One, as you were probably aware, we had ordinances that appropriated money for a new phone system, and then we had a resolution that approved the contract for it, and so now it's time to upgrade our phone system, our 20-year-old phone system, which in phone years is about 140. So that will be upgraded this week. On Wednesday, June 26, and Thursday, June 27, we'll be transferring from the old to the new system, and will take place from building to building. During this time, temporary disruption of service or inability to transfer calls may occur. So we ask if you call on Wednesday or Thursday and are not able to get through, please be patient, as the transfer service times will be minimal. So if you call and get cut off, just call back. But rest assured, calls to 911 and public safety will not be disrupted during this process. Couple of things that happened in the last two weeks. One, yesterday, Councilwoman Carmela Vitale and I presented Santo Liscari with a proclamation in honor of his 100th birthday, which occurred last week, and Carmela presented Santo with her traditional dozen roses, which was especially appropriate because of his love of the Rose City, as a 73-year resident. And a couple of things to note from the proclamation. He was voted best personality by his high school classmates in 1938, and you could see it coming through at age 100. And how about this for an amazing trifecta? He saw Frank Sinatra sing live at Paramount, watched Babe Ruth and Lou Gehrig play baseball, and met Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Santo has three children, Salvador, Roland, and Sandra, and she serves on our Board of Health, six grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. With a career in the entire business, he's had a reputation as sharp dresser, which, as I mentioned yesterday, put a lot of pressure on me, because I'm certainly not a sharp dresser, but I did my best. And he's been known as the best dressed man in St. Vincent's, where he's been a longtime parishioner. And he stood there at age 100 for the proclamation and chimed in at various times to add a little more background, as I brought up some of these things. Also, an update on our meeting calendar. Traditionally, we don't have a second meeting in August, so that is still the case, there is only one meeting in August, and we have canceled the July 8 meeting, because we will be down three elected officials and down to the bare minimum, and there's no precedent issues that we need to meet on July 8. So take that off your calendar, and we'll be back here on the 22nd. So you'll see that any ordinances being introduced have a hearing date of the 22nd. I'm going to come down below for a couple of presentations. Don't be bashful. Coaches, players, come on up. I had a feeling we'd be missing a few. It's been an incredible year for Madison High School athletics, and once again, we are honoring some amazing accomplishments, and we're going to congratulate the Madison High School Girls Lacrosse Team for achievement in winning North Two Group Two sectional championship for the first time in school history. And they also won the Freedom Conference Division. And of course, these accomplishments require extraordinary effort, outstanding teamwork, dedication, and perseverance, and we commend the team members for their commitment in reaching these goals, and we recognize head coach Toni Ann Cavalla, assistant coaches Courtney Davis, Lauren Dykstra, Christina Lazareto, and Nick Liberato for their leadership in training and coaching, and I apologize if I butcher those names. And the dedication achievements of these outstanding athletes have brought great pride to the Borough of Madison. In testimony of our appreciation, we have an official certificate with the official seal, and so I don't butcher any more names, what I'm going to do, and since we don't have a full crew, I'm going to start at this end. I want you to introduce yourself and say what year you just finished, and if you're graduated, if you want to share your plans for next year, would be great to hear.
I'm Talia Arena, and I just finished freshman year.
I'm Brooke Clavon, and I also just finished freshman year.
I'm Kate Christos, and I just finished sophomore year.
I'm Lily, and I just finished freshman year.
I'm Jula. I just finished senior year. I'm going to Muhlenberg next year to continue my lacrosse career. I don't know what I'm studying yet, but...
I'm Leah Rutland. I just graduated too, and I'm playing at Bucknell University next year.
And I'm Jenny Taylor, and I just finished my junior year.
As mentioned, you have done Madison proud, and you will continue to achieve, and with our number of underclassmen on this team, I think we'll have you back next year for once again. Would you like to say a few words?
Very proud coach right here. To have a great team, great group, and it was definitely a magical season, so thank you so much for recognizing that and recognizing the work of these amazing student athletes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. These students are accepting the proclamation, recognizing Pride Month, June 2019. Whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, and some of the most inspiring moments in our history have risen from the various civil rights movements that have brought one group after another from the margins to the mainstream of American society. And whereas, in the movement towards equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer, LBG-LGBTQ people, an historic turning point occurred 50 years ago on June 28, 1969, in New York City on the onset of the Stonewall riots. During these riots, LGBTQ citizens rose up and fought against discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas, all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and the rights of LGBTQ... LGBTQ, I should have that down. Individuals have had a measurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. And whereas, the Borough of Madison is committed to supporting the visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community, and whereas, while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, is essential to acknowledge the need for education awareness remains vital. And whereas, this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has the infinite dignity and worth, and whereas, celebrating Pride Month brings awareness and provides support and advocacy for Madison's LGBTQ community, and an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. And whereas, the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ people in society. Now, therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim the month of June 2019 as Pride Month for the Borough of Madison in support of the LGBTQ community, and rainbow flags will be displayed on Waverly Place from June 25, tomorrow, to July 1, recognizing all LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make Madison a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. So thank you for accepting this on behalf of all. Would you like to say a few words?
Hi, everyone. My name is Sabrina Lu, and I was just last year's GSA president. And on behalf of the LGBTQ community, I deeply appreciate that Madison Borough shows their support on a community level. I have had the honor and privilege to have grown up in Madison, and my differences and others' differences have not only been tolerated, but they've been accepted and celebrated. I'm so happy that Madison shines a light on the LGBT community, and I hope that Madison and other places will continue to take steps towards celebrating diversity. Thank you.
Very well said. And I want to also have a thank you and a recognition, a thank you to Eric Range for getting the flags that will be displayed on Waverly Place. And one of the honors I've had as being a mayor at the right time was to be able to do the first same-sex marriages in the town of Madison. As I look back to my good friend Mark back there, who for many years was told he couldn't marry the person he loved. And we have made great progress, but we have a long ways to go. So thank you for everything, and best of luck. Public Safety, Council President Bailey.
No report, Mayor.
All right. I'm sorry. Finance Borough Clerk and also Health, Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. The Audit Committee met on June 17 and spoke with members of the Nissabachia team about the results. The audit found no major concerns, and the final audit was delivered to council last week and will be posted on RoseNet, and I'm supposed to do one of these. Okay, that's what it looks like. And so our auditor Valerie Dolan will attend the July 22 council meeting to discuss the audit with the governing body. I would like to thank the members of the Audit Committee, Tom Bittenger, Art Powell, and Dave Lubre for their expertise, their time, and their service on this important committee. The Mayor's Surplus Committee met again last week. The committee includes Pat Rowe, myself, Maureen Byrne, Ray Cody, and Jim Burnett. Our auditor and bond attorney joined us at last week's meeting, and they did an excellent job explaining the importance of adequate surplus. We have some follow-up items, and, well, we don't have the follow-up items. Jim has the follow-up items to take care of. And then I expect we'll probably have a full council discussion on this subject in the next couple of months. The tax collector, the borough is waiting for the state legislature and the governor to finalize the state budget. Once that's done, the county would certify the tax rate, and the collector can then issue the property tax bills. Please monitor RoseNet for more details and dates. You want me to do Deb's, too?
Yep.
This is from the Health Department, food safety. Health Department reminds residents to be aware of proper food prep and storage during warmer summer weather. Temperatures may rise quickly in food left unrefrigerated and may lead to a conclusive breeding environment for foodborne illnesses. Thursday looks like it might be a heat advisory day, and the borough offices and the library will be open to provide air conditioning and shelter. The most preventable cause of skin cancer is overexposure to ultraviolet UV light, either from the sun or from artificial sources like tanning beds. When outdoors, seek shade, cover up wet-like clothing, hat, and sunglasses, apply appropriate sunscreen product, and limit time in the hottest sun between 12 noon and 3 p.m. Madison's municipal alliance with the Madison Health Department have created drug-free signs to place around the community. This is an environmental strategy to help prevent substance use. In collaboration with the Senior Center Pickleball and Walk and Talk Program, today, 25 people showed up to play pickleball and attend a talk on safe walking tips, sun safety, and heat prevention. Following the orientation, participants walked 3 miles, .3 miles, to the courts. Health inspectors are currently reviewing plans for several new food establishments in Madison. That's it.
Thank you very much. Utilities, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, from the Electric Department. On June 15, the standby team was called out because of a down tree that took out power to one of the buildings at the Town Garden Apartments on Madison Ave, but power was restored within the hour. Next work on the treadwell, Tidpoint, has been delayed by the excessive rain we received in the month of May. We do expect to complete that work in late July. And finally, the foundation for the new electric department building is now complete. The steel will be erected starting next week with completion of that portion of the work expected before the end of July. And from the Water Department, reconstruction on Community Place with a new 8-inch water main and services is scheduled for next month. Matina &amp; Sons has been awarded the Grove Street to Highland Ave water main project to replace the existing 4-inch water main with a new 8-inch water main. That project is scheduled to commence either later this summer or very early in the fall. And final reminder from the Water Department, residents who have automated sprinklers should have their rain sensors calibrated or upgraded to a system that utilizes weather to determine the amount of water your garden needs. The department constantly witnesses sprinklers that are running during rainstorms, and this is obviously wasting water for all of us. Thank you very much.
If your sprinkler is turned on at all this year, you're wasting water.
Yes.
And Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. As usual, a lot of what I've had to say got picked up by the people before me, but as Pat mentioned, the floor for the electric building now at the DPW is finished and on track. Plans and cost estimates for the replacement of the Dodge Field Playground Building have been circulated for review. We hope they will be advertised this summer, excuse me, summer, for fall construction. We are also hoping that the plans and cost estimates for a DPW recycling center, they have been circulated for review, and we hope they will be advertised this summer for fall construction. What we're hoping with this DPW recycling center is that it would be outside of the wall so that people could come whenever it was easy for them to come, not necessarily within the 8 to, or rather, 7 to 3 DPW opening, and it would be enclosed so that it would not, you know, attract critters. GPW continues to do a wonderful job of maintaining our vehicles, keeping things on the road. They're also kept busy doing one thing that I think we need to teach our children to do, and that is pick up after themselves. Every morning, DPW goes out to the fields to look at the fields, and every day, every field, the MRC, Rose Deal Fields, Whitey Vitale, are littered with water bottles, and there are plenty of garbage bales there to take those water bottles. So please, if you are a parent of a child playing at one of those fields, ask him to pick up after himself, or better yet, bring a recyclable bottle. Thank you.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. For the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, there's no report. For the Senior Center, as was mentioned, the outdoor pickleball program for seniors started at Dodge Field Basketball today, right after we spent 10 minutes picking up bottles, empty bottles. With the help of the Health Department and Transoptions, 26 people signed up to learn to play. From the Director of Business Development, the Downtown Development Commission, the farmer's market, you can't say this too often, is now open for business for the 2019 season on Central Avenue between Cook and Main, and it will run from Thursday, May 23, through October 24. The hours are still 2 to 7, and it also features weekly musical performances. This is the 27th season of the market. Bottle Hill Day sponsorship and application packets are now available on rosenet.org and have been sent via email to past participants. The Museum of Early Trades and Crafts Downtown Concert Series, sponsored by the DDC, is back. The season opens Friday, June 28. The concerts are held on the METC lawn, the museum's lawn, and are scheduled from 6 to 8 p.m. This event is free. Bring your family, a picnic, check out the exhibits at METC, and enjoy a night of great music. Four-legged family members are also welcome to come and enjoy the music. However, dogs are not allowed inside the museum. The initial concert will be Rosewood, and it has a synergy that unites an audience, young and old, with powerful spirit of friendship and family fun. The Chamber of Commerce starts its new fiscal year on July 1. The Chamber will be developing a new website this summer, so look out for that. And Happy Hour is this Wednesday, June 26, from 5 to 7, at the Shanghai Jazz. The July 2 board meeting is scheduled, has been rescheduled to July 9 because of the Fourth of July holiday, and there'll be no focus meeting on July 3. For the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, there's no report. For MACA, there's no report. For the Recreation Advisory Committee, they will be finalizing recommendations tomorrow night at their meeting, monthly meeting, on user fees. They will also provide feedback on the Dodge Field House project. Mayor's Wellness, no report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Communication petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received one email dated June 14 from President Dave Carver of Belle U Avenue complimenting the borough engineer regarding the reconstruction of Chateau Thierry.
Thank you. And now, this is our first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to items that are agenda discussion or resolutions. If you want to comment on ordinances, there'll be a hearing, that's when your time to comment on those, and if you want to comment on other topics, that'll come a little bit later in our second invitation for discussion. Our agenda discussion tonight is the parking ordinance amendments, which will be ordinances 27 and 31, so you can comment on those. Or these resolutions, I'll go through them quickly so you also understand what's in the consent agenda. Resolution 2003, execution memorandum of understanding between the American Red Cross and Borough of Madison. This provides a framework for cooperation and support between the Red Cross and Madison OEM during times of crisis. 204, approving raffle license for the Rotary Club of Madison. 205 is rejecting proposals for mobile parking payment and reinforcement system and authorizing re-advertising requests. The Resolution 206, renewing liquor licenses in the Borough of Madison for Prospect Tavern, Waverly Restaurant Group, which is Bottle Hill Tavern, Rishi Enterprise, which is an inactive distribution license, and Main Street Wine Cellar. Resolution 207, approving raffle license submitted by the ELCS for conduct daily instant raffle games, including Sundays. Resolution 208 is confirming change order and final payment number three to Joe Med Contracting for the Greenwood Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, and that was a final payment in the amount of $34,000, and this was funded through ordinance 18, 2018. Resolution 209, authorizing $300,000 NJ Municipal Aid Application for Burnett Road Reconstruction Project, again, having the state as a partner for more major projects. The Resolution 210, authorizing $260,000 NJ DOT Municipal Aid Application for Safe Streets to Transit Crosswalks Improvement, to make it safer to get to our train station. Resolution 211, authorizing use of parking lot number three by Food Truck Fest LLC and the Madison PBA, and this will be on September 14, 2019. Resolution 212 is application for livery owners for Rose City Limo. And Resolution 213, police vehicle accessory equipment, gun cabinets, cameras, sirens, and related equipment from the police outside duty account, and that's not to exceed $30,000. So those are resolutions. Anyone wishing to comment on those resolutions or the one agenda item, you may step forward, state the agenda item, and keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you a one-minute grace period. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to agenda discussions. Lisa Ellis is here to tee up our parking ordinances that are being introduced tonight.
Okay. When I was here in mid-May, I mentioned that next step, one of the major next steps would be the introduction of the new version of Chapter 134 Parking Lots and any additional ordinance changes. You have those before you tonight, and I will answer any questions on those. I know there's a lot of words, but in Chapter 134, the main substantive changes that we're making are to create merchant-employee street parking zones, which is the chart that's included in there, the raising of parking violation fines and making them progressive, and maximizing the use of existing parking spaces through tiered parking schedules for different times for merchants, commuters, tenants, et cetera. That's all built into that new version of the ordinance. Then, we also have, the Mayor's Ad-Hoc Parking Committee also had a few additional recommendations, which are actually covered in Chapter 185. Those included creating three grab-and-go 15-minute parking spaces, which are detailed there, one both on the north side of Main Street, and both with, right next to the existing loading zones that are there. That was where the police wanted those placed. And another one on the corner of Central Avenue, closest to Main Street by the pharmacy. We will also eventually, but that wasn't covered in this ordinance, add an additional handicap space on Lincoln. And the big one in Chapter 185 is to change all one-hour parking, what's currently one hour, to 90 minutes. So that's the gist of it, but I will answer any questions.
Questions or comments from Pat?
You mentioned handicap. How many handicap spots are we adding downtown, and where will they be?
We're going to add, the intent right now is to add one additional street, on the street, on the corner of Lincoln Place, where it meets Waverly, right in there. That's the only one recommended right now by the police, but certainly if you...
Coming on to Waverly or off of Waverly?
On.
On to Waverly?
Yeah.
When we... The, when we, the redesign of Cook, which will be seen, includes quite a few more in the Cook Avenue parking lot.
Okay. Is there any state requirement for how many we need to have in a given area downtown?
In the lots, yes, but not-
But on the streets, no?
No.
And when you put a spot on the street, does it get the same kind of treatment where there's extra space in front or behind it?
It should. It should be a bigger spa, a bigger space. There's one existing now on Waverly, on the corner down by-
Yeah, actually, it's typically no, because the extra space is the width of a parking spot as opposed to a length. So the one at Waverly is-
I think there's a little buffer, a little more buffer on either end, but I don't know.
Yeah.
There's buffers on some of those spots anyway, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That means I-
Yep. Lisa, I want to thank you for the extensive work. It was quite a bit of going through all the ordinances, and we just mentioned the Food Truck Fest in Parking Lot 3, so we'll stop calling it Parking Lot 3.
Right, it's King's Road.
King's Road Parking Lot, so we'll have a better, so there's no, there'll be no confusion. The other, I want to thank the Parking Lot Committee, members of the DDC Chamber, and business owners that worked so hard to bring this here. We've, we've heard it so many times that over the decades that we've done studies and no action was taken. And to be able to improve the parking, this is not the end, but this is improving the parking without paving any more land, so this is a big step.
You will see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, so those are ordinances 27 and 31, which are listed for introduction. Will the clerk please read the statement on ordinances for hearing?
Yes. Ordinance is scheduled for a hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on first reading. Regular meetings of the council held on Wednesday, May 29th, Monday, June 19th, 2019. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public casting scene.
All right. Before I call up the ordinances, I'm just going to make one statement, which we have done in the past, is when we have similar ordinances, we'll combine the hearings, but the votes will be separate. So ordinances 24 through 26, which are all appropriating general capital improvement funds for fire equipment, we'll combine those hearings, and so if you're going to comment on those, it will be one opportunity. So I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 21-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $49,275 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund as matching funds to implement a conservation management plan at the Madison Recreation Complex.
Hey, Ron.
Nope, you're getting, you're getting ahead of yourself.
Ahead of hearing for-
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this? Ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. I move ordinance 21-2019.
I second that.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 21-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 22-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $18,797 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund as matching funds to establish a dog park at Memorial Park.
I open hearing for ordinance 22. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Welcome, Kathy.
Kathy Daly, West Ed Avenue. As many of you know, I'm the chartered organization representative for PAC 7 and Troop 7 here in Madison, New Jersey, the Cub Scout PAC and Boy Scout Troop that are chartered by St. Vincent Martyrs Church. And in, in the event that the council approves ordinance 22 and establishes a dog park at Memorial Field, as I've spoken to you about before, and as you've heard from other scout leaders as well, Madison scouting programs are going to lose a camping area that they've used for many decades. Although Girl Scouts have camped there on occasion, all three Cub Scout Packs in particular have relatives for their annual family camping outing each spring. Today, we had a meeting with the Parks Advisory Committee, who reached out to the scouting community. It was a very pleasant meeting. We actually did an onsite walkthrough of an area that they were proposing as an alternative camping location for future family campouts. And interestingly enough, the very site that the Parks Advisory Committee had proposed for our consideration happens to also be the same site that the scouting volunteers were planning to propose to the Parks Advisory Committee, so, for their consideration. So that was, that was a good start to our meeting, for sure. The park shows a lot of promise as a possible camping area for Madison scouting programs. Some of the improvements that Parks Advisory told us about, that they already intend for the area, will go a long way toward making it more friendly for family campouts. I will say, we spent about half of our meeting, time-wise, about half of the time that we spent was talking about specifically the considerations relating to a campfire and needing to build a council ring, and the considerations surrounding that. So one of the considerations is clearing the, clearing the area so that there's sufficient space around so that it doesn't create a fire hazard. There also needs to be adequate water access nearby. All of this is necessary so that we can, so that the approvals that are needed for a fire ring can, can be received and obtained from the Madison Fire Department. Madison Fire Department has not been involved in the discussion yet, so we did look at an area that we all seemed to agree was going to be best for that council ring, and what we, what we thought was going to be best is alongside the trailhead, so kind of near the picnic area. If you know where the picnic tables are, there's a short section of trail that connects the two parking areas, and we thought the area, sort of a triangle-shaped area near there, would be good for building a council ring. And while the campfire location is probably the biggest-
One minute.
-consideration, we also discussed some other important safety, hygiene, parking, and other convenience issues. It was a very good first meeting, but it was just that, it was a first meeting. We will need to flesh out the planning in the next few months if we're going to be ready for the spring events that will happen in 2020. As scouting appears to be really the only group in town that's losing, losing out from the establishment of a dog park, we hope and we expect that Parks Advisory, Open Space, and the Borough Council will work with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great to hear progress of that meeting. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Good evening, Mayor Connolly, Ms. Osborne, ladies and gentlemen, friends and neighbors. My name is Jason Luffler. I am a 20-year resident living at 10 James Place, and I want to thank you for allowing us to speak on behalf of this very sensitive and important topic. The scouting has been a part of the community where the, now that Dog Park is going, for over 40 years, almost half a century. The exact time, I do not know. We do ask, I am an assistant then leader for PAC 226, and my, which my son is a member. My daughter is also in scouting, in the Girl Scouts. And I just want to, first of all, thank Mr. Alaco and his, the gentleman, everyone that showed up to participate in this endeavor. The, I guess, was very disappointed that, you know, scouting, which is an integral part, it's one of the institutions in America that's over 100 years old, is, was kind of pushed out, and there's a lot of people that felt that way. But moving forward, which we need to, I'm hoping that we can get your support, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen, to make this happen. It's a beautiful space up there, it's high ground. I should also preface, I'm a 28, 38-year volunteer firefighter, and a 27-year volunteer EMT, and an ex-military officer. So when it comes to finding site selection, it's one of the things I did in the military. So this is a, it's, it's a very nice spot, and we hope that you will have your support and continue supporting scouting. Thank you.
Thank you. And rest assured, there's the commitment of this council, as discussed prior, that scouting does an amazing job, and we want to continue to support that, and a great opportunity to have a dog park is also positive, so make the best of all.
Mr. Mayor, one point of clarification, what park are we talking about?
No, never mentioned. Summer Hill, right?
Summer Hill.
Okay, just for the record, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name's John Taylor, I live at 2 Longview Avenue in Madison. I've been on the Parks Advisory Committee for roughly six years at this point, which is the equivalent amount of time that we have been pursuing the Dog Park. So we have been through three different council liaisons. We've got, we're on our second dog, and we are very much looking forward to the opportunity to potentially get this vote to come through this evening. We have been through three Bottle Hill Days, we have over 600 signatures of support for this. We are phenomenally conscientious of the Boy Scouts, we have no interest in pushing them out whatsoever, we want them to have a new home. I am on the Parks Committee, as I'd said, so we do have a dedication to finding a new home for them. We have raised the funds from a GoFundMe site through people in town. The signatures have been very strong, the people have voiced very strong opinion to have a dog park here in town. The memorial field that we're looking at is the picnic area. It has stunned me how many people have said, "We have a picnic area at Memorial Park." So we are very much looking forward to expanding the use of one of our dominant parks here in town. We have recognized that this is probably the best space in town, it's furthest away from all homes, it has water there already, it has shelter, we've got a tremendous amount of optimism that this is the best place in the city to be able to put this. Very much looking forward to your support on this, and thank you for putting up with us for the last six years to try and put this through.
Thank you for your leadership and patience. Anyone else wishing to be, Paul?
Did meet with Tom Seleki and Kathy Daly and six PAC leaders from Cub Scouts, several Boy Scout parents and everything concerned. They are the only ones that's losing on this deal, they're being asked to give up an area that they've used for over 40 years. It was nice to see that they were interested in the same area that Tom Seleki is developing for that area. The concern is, how long will that take? We would like to see, we on Parks Advisory would like to see approval given to them to work on certain areas up at Summer Hill right now. They want, put in a fire pit with the approval of Ed Nun. We'd like, they're in an area, if you come up off of Ridge Dale Avenue, there's water right there on the top, there's benches already in place, there is a nice area where a small fire pit could be put in right away with gravel and Belgian block, and we, the scouts are willing to work with Ken O'Brien. We feel his crew could be able to cut down some knotweed areas, a couple of stumps, and a small pit that would serve them right away this summer. My, our recommendations were to them to approach you, we would like to see this done. As I mentioned, they're the only group that's been kind of punished and moved out of their area, and I think we owe them a little bit more than some other groups. They, they could immediately get this work done for this summer and have, have their Cub Scout and Boy Scout meetings up there. I would like to see that they get the attention here to, I go ahead to work on this now, and I suggested to them that I go ahead and look for some, some grant money to, there're going to be other trails going through that park, there's other things that will be going on in this area, which has been currently used either for open space, there is right up there now some soccer nets, they're up there, signs where people have been walking their dog and not picking up the waste, and, you know, so we're going to develop that in the long term, but I'd like to see that something done for them right away, and that's the thought of the Parks Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Paul. What we'll do is, we will contact Tom to see if they're ready for a presentation for our July 22nd meeting, and if so, we will put that on the agenda, but we'll make sure we're moving forward with this at a quick pace, and this is, will be, you know, for the 2020 season, as the 2019 camping was taken care of, set for current site, Austin.
I just wanted to add that, of course, the Open Space Committee will work with the Parks Committee to make this happen. I mean, it's a perfect project. And Tom and I've talked about the master plan for Summer Hill Park, so we're very aware of, of the need to keep that going, and the maintenance of the trails going.
So we will touch base. Maureen?
Yeah, and I'd like to add, both of my sons were Eagles, and, sorry, they were Boy Scouts, and camping was an integral part of being a Boy Scout, it's how they, how they learned about consequences and being responsible. So I don't think anybody wants to see it leave, just-
Yep. Just, we'll have council discussion in a moment, so-
I was going to say, have we closed the hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So let's, anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 22-2019.
I second it.
Any further council discussion? Pat?
Yeah, I'll be voting for this. I do hope, though, that we are prepared to move ahead so that the scouts are taken care of by next year, and I would also hope that we wouldn't ask them to either raise money or to look for grants, although that would be nice, because we are displacing them, this is not something new they're asking for, but it's a replacement for something that they already have.
I think what I've understood is there'll be sweat equity, probably, from the scouts, that maybe as a Eagle Scout project or somewhere, so I think that would probably be the right approach for it. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hoover? Yes.
I declare ordinance 22-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 23-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 195 Land Development Ordinance for the Borough.
I open hearing for ordinance 23. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 23-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 23-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. I now will ask the clerk to read by title ordinances 24 through 26 for the hearing.
Ordinance 24, 2019, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $391,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a new pumper in year 2020. Ordinance 25, 2019, is the ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $110,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a new trailer and equipment for the fire department. Ordinance 26, 2019, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $12,500 from the General Capital Improvement Fund, the purchase of four new sets of firefighter turnout gear.
I open the hearing for ordinances 24 through 26. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Welcome, Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rachel Erlich, I live at 252 Kings Road. My name is Rachel Erlich, I live at 252 Kings Road. I'm speaking tonight in support of ordinances 24, 25, and 26 of 2019, which are being heard tonight. Together, these ordinances appropriate $513,500 for the purchase of new firefighting and rescue equipment. I recently had the pleasure of meeting Lieutenant James Blair of the Madison Fire Department. At the Public Safety Complex, he pointed out the apparatus that is expected to be replaced: Engine Number Three, a reserve engine dating from 1990, and Rescue Number Four, a 1995 walk-in rescue truck that carries confined space and trench rescue equipment. Lieutenant Blair explained that the new pumper, which is to be purchased next year under ordinance 24, will serve as a combined engine and rescue truck, replacing the two aging vehicles with one new truck. It will also tow the new rescue equipment trailer to be purchased under ordinance 25, and it will be fitted with new dedicated turnout gear. Currently, personal equipment such as air packs must be transferred from the newer trucks to the backup truck when the reserve engine is called out. Madison is able to keep our lifesaving fire and rescue equipment up to date and ready at a moment's notice because we have prudently set aside funds to invest in new equipment. The primary funding source for the General Capital Improvement Fund is monies from the electric utility surplus. Since our borough's tax-free property holders rely on the Madison Fire Department for the same protection of life and property as our taxpayers do, this use of the utility surplus allows us to share the cost of public safety investments with the borough's tax-free property holders. Through responsible pay-as-you-go fiscal policy, we are accruing needed capital funds over a number of years so that we can equip our fire department with modern apparatus without incurring debt or disrupting our operating budget. I support these ordinances and the use of capital funds and the utility surplus to pay for this critically needed new equipment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearings for ordinances 24 through 26, and call up a motion for ordinance 24 appropriating $391,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a new pumper.
Mayor, I move ordinance 24-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
I declare ordinance 24-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And now ordinance 25, 2019, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $110,000 for the purchase of a new trailer and equipment for the Fire Department. A motion, please.
Mayor, I move ordinance 25-2019.
I second it.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Ellie?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 25-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance, the ordinance according to the law. And now ordinance 26, 2019, which is ordinance Borough Madison appropriating $12,500 general capital for purchase of four turnout firefighting, four new sets of firefighting turnout gear. May I have a motion for that ordinance?
Mayor, I move ordinance 26-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
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 I declare ordinance 26-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And now we're on to the second of invitations for discussion, this may comment on any topic. Again, your comments should be limited to three minutes, I'll give you a one-minute grace period, and stop you at four, and state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I, oh, I'm sorry, didn't know if we were following the group out, sorry.
Evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ricardo Oliveira, I've been residing at 44A Central Avenue for the past four years, and unfortunately, I'm not here with a good message, with a good note. My family has experienced extreme racism and harassment here in the city of Madison. All my three kids have experienced harassment and bullying and racism in school. My son, Rafael, at Central Avenue School, has been basically told by the principal and the superintendent that if he feels bothered, he can go sit at the table, where the other white student has never really been punished or addressed. My son in middle school has had incidents where students had thrown water in his face, students had been physically with their shoulder in his chest and calling him an expletive that "I'm not going to stay here." And more recently, my son was called a gangster in class while another student accused him of stealing something. And Principal Caruso seems more interesting, interested in vilifying my son rather than addressing the problem, where I get phone calls from him saying, "Hey, your son acted in a physical way," well, that's because he doesn't feel safe in your school. And at last, my daughter, Zula Oliveira, which she had a pleasure of meeting you when she was, did the mayor of the day for Madison High School, she was called, she was a victim of a hate crime at the high school, where she was called a thug and a terrorist by her art teacher. The investigation lasted seven weeks, the teacher never really apologized, we received an HIB letter confirming the incident from the superintendent of the schools, and I'm here representing my kids about that. Additionally, also, my family's been suffering with racism in town, well, I'm going to give you an example, these are all facts. We were, I received a call from CPS, Child Protective Services, stating that my wife had beaten my son, and I had to rush home from my job in Manhattan. And to make a long story short, it was a false allegation, there was an investigation, there were calls that kept happening, and allegations that kept being made by the school, even to the point where a police car was sent to my home when I was not home, when I called the schools and told the schools that my son was not going to be there. I asked the superintendent if it was procedure for cop cars to be sent to people's homes when kids don't show up in school, they couldn't give me an answer. So I felt that, well, as a black family here, the black kid doesn't show up in school, you call the police car on us. And last but not least, my landlord has been extremely, he has harassed us, he has bullied us to the point where I had to call the police two days, two weeks ago. His wife came to my house, his wife is flipping my wife the bird, his wife is trying to grab my wife's phone, cellphone, and stopping my wife from getting the footage, and you know, then the feedback I got from the police department is that, well, we've had problems with this individual before.
One minute.
Okay, thank you. So it's a shame that I only have three minutes, but I'm here to document this for my children. You know, we've been living here for four years, we've had all of these problems happen to us as a diverse family, we're not only black, but we're Latino, we don't feel safe. I've had tires of my cars being slashed, okay, in the complex that I live. None of the other tenants had their tires been slashed, but mine were slashed. So my kids had problems with racism, tires in my cars get slashed, my family gets CPS called on us, and all of this is happening in Madison. So I'm here today to document this, and I am very unhappy, and I don't feel safe, I don't feel that my kids and my wife are safe here in the town of Madison.
Thank you, and sorry for the experience you have just shared. What we will do is, as far as the school issues, we'll just set a record of this conversation to the superintendent and board president, as the schools are not under this jurisdiction, but we certainly care about, no matter where it comes from, that is not the way we like to look at Madison. We will reach out to the police chief as far as steps that we can and should take to help you be more comfortable. You've left your contact information, so we can reach out with follow-ups. All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. We move on to introductions of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Monday, July the 22nd, 2019, will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 27, 2019, ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 134 of the Borough Code entitled Parking Lots.
Mayor, I move ordinance 27-2019.
Second.
Any further council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 28-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $142,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a mower, truck, and accessories for the Department of Public Works.
Maureen?
Oh, I'm sorry, I move ordinance 28-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 29-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $70,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a truck and accessories for the Water Department.
Mayor, I move ordinance 29-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 30-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $40,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to replace garage doors at the Public Works Garage.
Mayor, I move ordinance 30-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 31-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 185-32 of the Borough Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Schedule Four, Time Limit Parking.
Mayor, I move ordinance 31-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 32-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 195, Article 5 of the Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance of the Borough of Madison to amend the zoning map to include Block 2801, Lot 5, 41 Kings Road in the CBD One Zone District.
Mayor, I move ordinance 32-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 33-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $75,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of sidewalk, of a perch, for the purchase of sidewalk sweepern accessories for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance 33-2019.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 34-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $110,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Department of Public Works Recycling Center Project.
Mayor, I move ordinance 34-2019.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 35-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $10,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of body armor for the Police Department.
Mayor, I move ordinance 35-2019.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 36-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $75,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of security cameras and enhancements.
Um, Mayor, I move ordinance 36-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Austin?
I just wanted to make a comment that all of these ordinances that we're introducing tonight were all discussed at the time of the budget hearings, it just looks like we're doing this by, we've all really had discussions with all the department heads for each one of these ordinances. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne? Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
All right, Consent Agenda Resolutions, will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent Agenda Resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move our 2003, I'm not 200, 203 to Resolution 213-2019. Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be polled? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business, approval of vouchers, will the clerk please read the voucher register?
Current fund, $4,384,341.37.